Well, welcome to everybody. We're gonna get started with our formal agenda for April 21st, 2020. It is after 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Ergas?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right. Well, welcome again to this new way of meeting for council meetings, Iowa City Council meetings. And for the public that is with us, I wanted to just kind of talk about a few new things that we're doing here. So if you are participating on Zoom from your computer, you will see a button that would allow you to raise your hand. So if you hover over the bottom, you should see a little hand raise type symbol. So if you press that during the meeting, when we do get to community comment items, then I will actually call your name out and have you speak at that time if you would like to address a topic. For those that are on the phone, you will press the star nine on your phone to raise your hand. And then when I get to you, I will ask that you speak at that time. So I wanted to give people kind of fair warnings as to what we're going to be doing. And we're going to move on to the consent calendar items two through seven. They get a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
So moved. Mims?
Second, Thomas.
All right, discussion. So I do know that we had two individuals that wanted to discuss 7H.
Letters from the Affordable Housing Coalition, Sarah Barron, regarding utility relief for folks that might be needing that during this time of crisis. Wondering what the city liked about that, what resources we would have to help out with that.
So we got the letter on Wednesday. And I had the opportunity to talk with Sarah. She called before she sent it to talk through a couple of the points, too. We have not had time to go through and kind of fully analyze this request, but I think I'm comfortable in telling you right now that I'm certainly not in a position where I feel the city can commit these types of dollars to a relief effort yet. I think there's too many unknown variables to our own financial position. And I want to be very careful not to commit to a relief effort of this magnitude without really knowing where our own financial house is going to be in the next, you know, two months or two years. It is likely that we would have to use funds, general funds for this. So you're looking at your reserve dollars to supplement this type of program. And just five weeks into this pandemic, we know there are over 6,000 Iowa Cityans that have initiated unemployment claims. And so with an average monthly bill, just a one month bill of $100, you're already looking at over $600,000 of relief, just on a one month type of program like this. And I'm not saying at all that the idea doesn't have merit. I think it needs further study. And I think it's something that needs consideration once we can paint for you as policymakers a more complete financial outlook for the city going forward. I recognize that there's urgent needs out there, some of which may not be able to be addressed through the unemployment process. I trust those needs are going to continue for quite some time. And so while we want to move through that expeditiously, I can't sit here tonight and tell you with any comfort that it would be wise for the city to move forward right now.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it. I think your thoughts are reasonable. And there are a lot of uncertainties about this whole pandemic and how long it will be. And it could go on for quite a few months, which could tally up quite a bill there. So I think as long as people know, we do understand and empathize with them, and we'll help them out as best we can with the resources in the community, I think that's helpful.
I think we need to look at the overall financial picture going forward and figure out how we can maintain a solid base so that we can help as many people as possible.
A couple of things that came to my mind on this had to do with whether, first of all, as Jeff said, I think we need to understand what the financial consequences of this are. But, you know, one option would be, once we have that, to consider deferring on the payments and offering, you know, zero interest loans that could be paid off, you know, it wouldn't be a credit, it would be allowing for the bill to be paid off over a certain period of time, perhaps at zero interest. Another issue I was thinking about was whether, if we were to do this, something similar to it, would we want to include small businesses? Because they also have been hammered. So I think there are a lot of questions. Certainly, we need the, you know, the financial consequences and implications of this. But there are some other ways I think we could approach this if we were interested in trying to provide relief.
I think the other thing that's important, it's definitely that we make sure that we keep the city solvent and understand the implications on our budget before we start taking on additional expenses. So to me, that's first and foremost. And secondly, I'm not sure that using the criteria of one unemployed adult in the household is necessarily a fair and equitable way to determine this. Certainly, for the next few months, a lot of those individuals will be getting, hopefully, unemployment if they have applied to the state. And under the CARES Act, a lot of them may be getting as much as an extra $600 a week. I believe that lasts for four months. So simply to say that because you have one adult in a household unemployed, all of a sudden means that they cannot pay their bills is not necessarily the case. It may be in many cases, but it may not be in others. So I'm also uncomfortable with that aspect of it. But even before we get to that point, I totally agree with Jeff that we have to make sure that we have our own household in order in terms of city finances before we start figuring out ways in which we can, in a very reasonable manner, help those who are truly in need in the community. And we certainly need to get to that. But I think this is a little bit premature.
I think, you know, we have the reserve fund for a reason. You know, we have like five, six, $5 million in the reserve fund for this kind of crisis. And those $5 million, to begin with, it came from the public, from the same people now they are suffering, who cannot pay their bills. I understand that there is some people are able to pay. And I can also agree with you, maybe if it's, you know, the two households, one of them unemployment, maybe the other ones really will, like financially very good, they can like take care of the household while the other person is not, you know, is not working. That's fine with me if you can evaluate it that way. But there is some people who are really low income people, who are either both of them lost their jobs, or one of them lost their job because of the pandemic. And these people are living paycheck to paycheck. Even if we can reschedule this for them to make it like a payment for the future, it's going to affect their life forever because they have, you know, limited income, and they live paycheck to paycheck, and they have other responsibility. I think we need at least to agree that we're gonna make, you know, we're gonna pay for the people, or maybe we can forgive for the people who are really low income. I know maybe we don't have the capacity of evaluating who is really in need, who is not, who can, who cannot. But there is another organization who have that capacity. Like, say, for example, the Crisis Center, they give out sometime $100 to pay the utility. It could be electricity, it could be, you know, it could be the water as well. So if we can maybe just put a fund aside from the reserve fund to help the people who really cannot pay these bills, I think that would be great. So we can use, maybe the fund we can give it to the Crisis Center and ask them just to do it for the utility, for the water only, for the people who are really in need. But there is people in need, and there is fund they are reserved for $5 million. That's, of course, it's gonna cover the need of, you know, our own needs and our own loss, I mean. Employment wise, I don't think we lost a lot because we do have fund that is already being budgeted to pay those people. But that's not the time to talk about how can we cover the loss. But we really need to think about how can we help those people, you know, just with their bills because they cannot pay. There is many people I know they are not gonna be able to pay. And I heard Jeff before in one of the meeting, thank you for everything that you do. You are not shutting down the water for the people who cannot pay. You know, you are not having any sign of late fee if they cannot pay. All this is very good step that the city has taken. But also, we need to think about, I really agree with Sarah Barron, for some families, they cannot even be able to pay this. Maybe we need to think about that.
Jeff, could you get... Sorry.
All right, ahead.
I was just gonna say, maybe for right now, could we just get a quick recap from staff on the current relief? I think the utility discount program is still available, is that right? And also, what Mayor Potem was just saying about the not doing disconnection and late fee assessment, can you just recap that for, so we understand what the current situation is?
Yeah. So at the outset of the COVID-19 situation, we made the decision to discontinue our water shut offs. So we're no longer shutting accounts off for late payment or lack of payment. We've also eliminated the fee for late payment as well. So there's not going to be a compounding fee assessed to those individuals or households that cannot pay the water bill. And our finance staff are, you know, is tracking those numbers and tracking, you know, compared to previous years, how many water shut offs, you know, we would have had under normal situations. I don't have those numbers at my fingertip here, but we're tracking all of that. I think, you know, my concern, back briefly to the emergency reserve, yes, we do have $5 million, and that's available for your use, for your discretion during an emergency like this. But, you know, a month and a half into this, if we look at mid-March to May, we're probably going to have a $2 to $3 million loss in revenue. And there's no indication that we'll be able to get that back. There's a lot of discussions about federal relief that may or may not come. But across all our funds, we may be looking at, you know, $1 million to $2 million in lost revenue per month under current circumstances. And so while $5 million is a lot, we just need to be careful that if this situation continues for a couple of months, that we may need to lean substantially into that $5 million just to sustain our current operations and to continue to sustain our current workforce. And that's my hesitation. So but to be clear, that $5 million is available for you, for use at your discretion during an emergency like this.
Jeff, what about the $400,000 that we get for help to the residents of Iowa City?
So the CARES Act did provide extra CDBG assistance. And we have been notified that we will receive $410,000 in CDBG assistance, extra CDBG assistance. And our community development staff is working on a plan to deploy that. We don't have all the guidance from the federal government on how it can be used. But we generally think it'll be available to support either nonprofits that are work in the front lines of this crisis, whether it's food pantries, or homeless shelters, or mental health agencies, those sorts of things. Or it could be used to provide direct assistance to households, like rental assistance payments. So we will look to put that, those dollars to use as quickly as we can. The Housing and Community Development Commission just discussed that at their meeting last week. And you'll have an annual action plan amendment come before you at your next meeting, which will give us the authority to spend those dollars as soon as we get them. But we are awaiting that final guidance. And that 410 will help quite a bit. But it's certainly not going to address all the needs that are out there right now.
All right. I did want to just chime in and just give my thoughts on this. I appreciate the consideration of the individuals that submitted this letter for those in our community that do have some uncertain days ahead. I think it is very much clear to me that there's going to be a lot of needs in our community. I heard Counselor Thomas talk about, you know, the small businesses. Right now, for me, we do have halt on any shut offs, which I believe is very helpful. I believe we have some time to figure out what are all the requests that we may get, and how can we best help, you know, make the most of the monies that we can do as a city. So for me, the letter is not dead. It's just, right now, I don't think that, we're not making a decision on this tonight at all. It is just acknowledging that there are needs out there in the community for me. So if there is anything else, if there's nothing else about the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll just let the council know where staff is on kind of the bigger picture here. We hope that in May, and perhaps at your next meeting, we'll be able to present to you in your work session, more complete financial outlook for the city. We're not gonna have all the questions answered in May, but with each passing week, things become a little bit more clearer. So we're hoping in May to be able to present that financial outlook. And then we are starting to work on various concepts for economic recovery, for relief, both for households and for businesses. And the caveat there is, we don't know if we're going to have capacity to do that, right? Just what we talked about. We don't know if that financial capacity will be there for the city to do that. But we are planning for that. So that if you determine that we do have that financial capacity, when things are a bit clearer, that there's a framework for us to use in either support, again, direct households, our nonprofit communities, our business communities. And so what we're trying to do is assess the best ways to do that. It could be through utility relief, but it could be through some other mechanism. And then, you know, on the business side of things, looking at the relief packages that are coming out from the federal and state governments and trying to figure out where those gaps are, and what types of businesses aren't able to benefit from those, or maybe need a little bit more than those programs provided. So we're beginning to try to work with the business partnership and ICAD to try to figure out exactly what those gaps may be. So I'm happy to share that with you, too, after we're more kind of fully developed on our end at the staff level. If council wanted to get more involved in that, you could appoint somebody to kind of work with staff to make sure that we're going down the right path as we kind of do some potential planning for economic recovery.
But Mayor, you said that we are not making a decision now about that. What's the point here? I really don't understand. Just could you tell me, when can we make the decision? How can we get the answer for those people who are sending this letter for us to do this? And are we going to give like certain direction to the staff? Or why are you saying that we are not making a decision here? Are we gonna talk about this later?
I was referring to myself. I wasn't making a decision. It's not an item where we're taking a vote on it right now. And for me, this request, we're going to get possibly future requests on relief efforts within our community. And so this isn't, what I'm stating was, this wasn't a dead request for me, is I'm just not making, we're not making a decision on it tonight. And so I didn't want to kind of discard it and say that it's not going to come up again. Essentially, we're not making a decision. The good thing, at least from our perspective, is that no one's water is going to be shut off. So we have some time to talk about this potentially in the future. So that's what I meant by my comment. Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Ergas?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right. And if we're on item number eight, which is community comment, and this is new how we're doing this tonight. If you want to speak, there is a, if you hover to the right of your screen, you'll see a hand that you can raise. And if you can raise your hand, and then we'll allow you to speak. I'll call your name out. If you're on your computer. And this is a time where people in the community can talk about anything that's not on our formal agenda. If you are a caller on the phone, you can press nine, star nine, on your phone to raise your hand. And it's a little blue hand to the right. Sarah Barron. Oh, I see some hands. All right. So Sarah Barron, I'm going to call you first for a community comment. Please keep your comments to three to five minutes, please.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Awesome and amazing.
It's really nice to see your faces even from a distance. I have two items for your consideration today. The first is, I do want to talk just a bit about the utility relief request that we submitted last week. Thank you very much for your discussion and for considering it. As Jeff mentioned, it was a pleasure to talk with him to get a little bit more information before sending the letter. We understand that this is a big request. And we understand that there is a lot for you to consider. A couple of points I want to make. One is that our board comprises the leaders of housing organizations, as well as very involved community members, who unanimously voted to support this request. There are folks who are very well versed in what the community emerging need is. And they see this as a really important component of alleviating the housing cost burden that people are facing exponentially as a result of the COVID-19 crisis. You're probably getting a lot of requests or community feedback that people want to see you take action on reducing rents, or canceling rent payments, or offering mortgage forbearance. And we know that you can't, as a city, independently legislate those things. But you do have control over how much people are paying for the housing cost of water, sewer, and refuse. And so we know you're going to be getting a lot of requests for assistance. And that's precisely why we came in early with this request. As you're considering all of the different ways that you can support the community, we really hope that you will think very critically about how you can use utility relief as a tool to financially and kind of morale wise support low income members of our community who are really struggling, who are making choices about how to spend very limited resources. To be able to tell them that they have one critical component of their housing costs that they won't have to worry about over the next coming months would make a really big difference for a lot of households. And I encourage you to be creative, both about how you finance it, how you roll that program out, and also who should be eligible for it. I can offer you a criticism of what we've, of what we submitted alongside with what Susan said. There are also gig workers and others who have seen their hours reduced, but they're not necessarily completely laid off, who are really economically struggling. So if you can come up with another clear cut system that would equitably offer this kind of utility relief to the households who need it most, we would fully support you in doing that. We're really proud to have the partnership of the Iowa City Federation of Labor and the Center for Worker Justice in making this request. Groups that really represent workers who are hurting right now. And we trust that you will make sure that your budget reflects your priorities when it comes to that. So thank you for your continued consideration of that. We'll look forward to making a data-informed decision about how to equitably offer that relief and support to households moving forward. And I'd be happy to have one-on-one conversations with any of you if you want to talk more specifics or do some brainstorming with us. The second thing is, I was watching your work session as you were talking about your strategic plan. And I want to encourage you to make a little different commitment under affordable housing. Over the last few years, the city has made tremendous growth in its affordable housing initiatives. And in large part, that's because you had a very detailed 15-point action plan that you followed with fidelity. And it was great to see that. We're lacking that same kind of mid to long-term vision right now for affordable housing as a city, with the completion of the first plan, which is something to celebrate and also something to build on. And I would love to see you commit to developing a really solid action plan next phase. I'm committed to that in your strategic plan. I'll just wrap up by saying thank you for all that you are doing and will continue to do in support of housing affordability in Iowa City. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, the next person we have is Martha Norbeck.
She's in mute.
Martha, you're muted.
I'm mute now. Okay. I think I got it. Well, thank you, Mayor. I wrote my comments to make sure that I could stay within the allotted time. I wanted to talk to you about the vote on April 7th. COVID-19 has been taking over all of our attention lately. And we may have lost sight of 2019 and some of the things that occurred. So I want to ask you to recall the fires in the Amazon, in California, the fires in Australia, and record flooding again along the Missouri and the Mississippi. Climate change is already affecting our lives. So the following is an excerpt from a speech. You may know the author. "Our House Is On Fire. I am here to say our house is on fire. According to the IPCC, we are less than 11 years away from not being able to undo our mistakes. People like to tell success stories, but on climate change, we have to acknowledge that we have failed. But Homo sapiens have not yet failed. Yes, we are failing, but there is still time to turn everything around. We can fix this. We are facing a disaster of unspoken sufferings for enormous amounts of people. Now is not the time for speaking politely, or focusing on what we can or cannot say. Now is the time to speak clearly. We have to stop our emissions of greenhouse gases. Either we do that or we don't. No matter how uncomfortable that may be. The bigger your carbon footprint, the bigger your moral duty. The bigger your platform, the bigger your responsibility. Adults keep saying, we owe it to the young people to give them hope. But I don't..." But I don't want your hope. I don't want you to be hopeful. I want you to panic. I want you to feel the fear that I feel every day. And then I want you to act. I want you to act as if you would in a crisis. I want you to act as if our house is on fire because it is. These words were spoken by Greta Thunberg at Davos in 2019. I was so disappointed to read NIMBY letter after NIMBY letter. Letters saying no rather than asking how from the same people who have stood before you and demanded climate action. The assertions of that we build another project instead of the one at Water Works are naive. We are past time for this or that project. It is time for this one and that one and another and another. We stop the virus or we don't. We draw down emissions or we don't. Failure at either will lead to disaster of unspoken sufferings for enormous amounts of people. Should Governor Whitmer liberate Michigan because people are unhappy with her decisions? I ask you to cut through the noise, identify and accommodate legitimate concerns and get this project done. Prairie Habitat can continue to thrive amongst the solar panels. And fretting about alliances with Mid-American is myopic. Allies don't have to agree on everything to move forward on common goals. The street value of this project is $8 million. If you tried to do it yourself as a city, it would cost you $8 million. As I articulated in my letter, which is in page 5134 of your packet. Are you really gonna walk away from $8 million of direct greenhouse gas action? I am scared. I am scared that if you do not act on the courage of your convictions now, when the data is on your side and the Mid-American will literally pay you to act. I am scared that if you bend now, what will you do when the choice is more complex? And to my neighbors who did no reading of the packet, did no homework, but still found time to write a "not in my backyard" letter. I want you to feel the fear that I feel every day. Then I want you to act. I want you to act as if our house is on fire because it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. And Goan, we're gonna have you to speak next.
Uh, Guin. Yeah. Uh, I don't know how I'm gonna follow that. But my comments are along the same sentiment. Um, I'm here to comment on the vote that council took on the 7th regarding the uh, solar array project at Waterworks Prairie Park. As to Martha's point, um, I don't believe that the council has taken into full consideration the exact scope of what economic and environmental devastation could be presented following uh, the succession of climate change. Um, I'm a young person, and I've been following these meetings since the first public hearing and have not heard one young person, such as myself, being able or I think even have the resources during these pandemics to be able to give their opinion on this. And I have no doubt in my mind that the majority of people my age would feel the same way. Our house, as Martha said, is on fire. And I'm scared because the majority of people that were giving opinions saying not to build this project or to relocate it to the airport instead of both the airport and the park were not in my age range, are not going to be the people that are bearing the economic and environmental brunt of climate change. Like, I will have to, and my boyfriend will have to, and my sibling will have to, and my friends will have to. And I think that it's it's short-sighted to vote no. And it's in, at such an environmental impact that I'm afraid that my house is gonna burn down, as Martha said. I don't have prepared statements like she did, but she said everything that I needed to say and more. I really hope that you guys reconsider, reconnect with Mid-American energy, and try to find a way to satisfy both those of the majority of the people that spoke out that are living in the peninsula neighborhood while still being able to establish a solar array there and at the airport and elsewhere. Because we are past the point of relocation. We're here, there, and elsewhere. Everywhere that we can, because otherwise, I and my friends and my loved ones, the people my age, are going to be bearing the brunt of this environmental impact. I just hope that you take that into consideration moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. There's, and I don't see anyone on the phone with their hand raised. Again, if you're on the phone and you wanted to raise your hand, star nine is the way to make comment. Since I don't see anyone, we are going to move on to item number nine. Transit funding application. Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2021. Iowa Department of Transportation State Transit Assistance and Federal Transit Administration Funding. The city of Iowa City is holding this session by electronic means pursuant to the provisions of the Iowa Open Meetings Law, Section 21.8 Code of Iowa. As a result of substantial community spread of COVID-19 in the state of Iowa and based on the latest guidance from the CDC, from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, it is practical for the Iowa City City Council, it is impractical for Iowa City City Council to meet in person. Therefore, the meeting is being held electronically, originated from the Zoom meeting platform. It is open to the public, and those in attendance can hear the proceedings or the public can participate via the internet or phone from a remote location. Public notice of the meeting has been issued in accordance with Iowa Code, Section 21.4. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And do we have a staff that would like to present on this? You're muted, Darian.
Hi there. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff. This is Darian Nagelgam. I am the Director of Transportation Services for the city. And tonight before you is our annual application for state DOT transit funding and for our federal transit funding. This is both an application which will enable us, it's our formal request for, and it will enable us to receive those state and federal transit funds that are so important to keeping our transit system running. And it also helps to ensure that any capital projects or any potential future projects such as new buses or a replacement transit facility will become eligible for federal funds.
Any questions for Darian? Hearing none. Is there anyone from the public that would like to uh, address this topic? Hearing none, I'm gonna, and again, the public, if you want to speak on this, um, you would raise your hand, and then I would call you on you. And if you're on the phone, uh, you press star nine to talk on this topic. Saying none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Did I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Move by Mims.
And by Weiner.
All right, council discussion.
This is Pauline. I was especially glad to see that last bullet point about the matching funds for bus replacement. Uh, 'cause I, I was disappointed that we had to cancel the demo of the electric bus, and I, I do hope that we get to do that again sometime soon.
John Thomas, yeah, this is an important um, application. I was just quickly totaling the uh, the requests. And in their entirety, it's about a $25 million application. So it's a major, potentially a major source of revenue. So, or of um, funds to, to advance our transit system. So I will be approving it.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms.
Yes.
Sali? Sali?
Yes, yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Ergis?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10, 2020 Water Pavement Patching. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of costs for the construction of the 2020 Water Pavement Patching Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid. Direct and city clerk to post notices to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And who will, there you are. Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council of Ron Kentucky Public Works Director. Uh, this project will repair pavement that has been damaged by water main breaks in our community. Uh, we currently have around 60 locations. Uh, but with each water main break, uh, the list grows. Uh, the project is estimated to cost $150,000.
Any questions for Ron? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? I don't see any hand raises um, from either the computer attendees or the phone attendees. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So move, Thomas.
Second, Mims.
Council discussion. Hearing the roll call, please.
Sali? Sali?
You're muted.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay. Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Ergis?
Yeah.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11, Lower Muscatine Area Storm Sewer Improvements. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of costs for the construction for the Lower Muscatine Area Storm Sewer Improvements Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid. Direct and city clerk to post notice to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and we're gonna have a presentation by staff.
Uh, good evening, uh, Ron Kentucky once again. Uh, this project will install storm sewer on DeForest Avenue between Sycamore Street and Franklin Street, and also on Ginter Avenue between Ash Street and Lower Muscatine Road. The project also includes pavement replacement of DeForest in the same area as the storm sewer. Uh, that area was identified in our pavement management program as in need of removal and replacement. Uh, the project itself is estimated at $1,210,000.
All right, any questions for Ron? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? And you can raise your hand both on the computer and by pressing star nine on your phone. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So move, Thomas.
Second, Pauline. Taylor.
All right, council discussion.
My, I, one thing I like about this project is the combining of both the pavement work and the sewer work. So uh, you know, integrating when we're in a location where they overlap and combining in a contract. I'm really happy to see that.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Ergis?
Yeah.
Mims?
Yes.
Sali?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 12, sale of 1232 Sandusky Drive. Resolution authorizing conveyance of a single-family home located at 1232 Sandusky Drive. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And do we have someone here to address this from staff?
Yeah. Hi, this is Erica with Neighborhood Services. Um, so 1232 Sandusky Drive is the second home to be sold through the South District Home Ownership Program. The project is nearly identical to the sale of 1234 that was approved at the last meeting. Uh, but I'll go over some of the key features. The city acquired the duplex for, for $124,000 in August of 2019 and then converted the duplex to a two-unit condominium to sell to eligible home buyers. When we purchased the property, this unit had some smoke damage due to the fire in the adjacent unit. Renovations included kitchen and bathroom updates, um, upgraded electrical, new siding and garage door and a fenced yard. The project also featured a range of sustainable improvements um, such as solar panels, insulation, energy star rated appliances, tree plantings, new windows and doors, and long life cycle flooring. Um, the home appraised at $144,000. The sales price was set at $115,000, which is the acquisition cost, renovation cost, and any carrying cost the city has incurred. Of the $115,000, $35,000 was funded by local funds and will be provided as a conditional mortgage on the property for given over 10 years. The buyers expected to receive $20,000 in doubting this through the federal home program. And then the remainder will be financed by a local lender. The buyer has lived on Taylor Drive for over six years and has completed homebuyer education with Horizons. Um, I also wanted to go over our outreach and application process a little bit. After we acquired this property, we sent letters to all renters in the South District project area notifying them of the program and of opportunity for financial counseling. That was over 250 units in the project area. We partner with Horizons to provide HUD-certified homeownership counseling. Anyone who completes their homeownership course can be reimbursed for the $99 fee, regardless of whether they purchased a home through the program. The course also includes one-on-one financial counseling with, with Horizons. Um, and we've had five people complete the course, and that includes our home buyers. The South District Neighborhood Association has been extremely helpful in promoting the homebuyer opportunities. Um, they've been promoting the program as they're out doing other activities in the neighborhood, and they've even taken down names and provided them to staff to follow up with and provide applications. Our application process consists of filling out the application, providing income documentation, completing the homebuyer education, and then getting financing. Um, applications are accepted on an ongoing basis, and the opportunity to purchase a home is based on two things. First, uh, we establish preference category where residents of Taylor Drive and Davis Street are the top preference, followed by residents of the South District project area, and then participants in the Housing Authority's Family Self-Sufficiency Program. Um, within those preference categories, the opportunity to purchase a home is determined by the date of the income certification, which is, which is the date staff has received all the necessary documentation to determine that the household is eligible for the program. Some of the barriers we've seen for participants include just general uncertainty about the program or buying a home. Staff has worked closely with applicants to make sure they're comfortable with the process and, um, we're available to answer any questions. The homebuyer education class is designed to help people decide if they're financially ready to purchase a home. Um, so even if people are not ready to participate in our program, we recommend that they take the class or reach out to Horizons. We also have a number of incomplete applications. We have several people on our list who have not provided income documentation, so they can't move forward. Um, we've been regularly following up with them to help them through the process. Um, another barrier has been financing. We've had two applicants who are unable to obtain financing. Um, we work closely with the buyer's lender to help, to help explain the process and the program. In one case, it's potentially a short-term fix. In the other case, it might be a more long-term resolution to help them get financing. But we are keeping in touch with those applicants so that they can participate in the future. Um, and finally, we do have a couple applicants who do not meet the preference category, so they are not likely to have an opportunity to purchase through this. And finally, we do have a couple applicants who do not meet the preference category, so they are not likely to have an opportunity to purchase through this program. If council has ideas or recommendations on how we can expand outreach or better assist applicants through the program or open to incorporate those into our process, two additional units on Taylor Drive that will be available in upcoming months and plan to do more units in the future.
Any questions?
I just want to ask the staff, when do they expect the doublex to be ready?
So it's about a month out for the renovations, but maybe a little longer due to coronavirus.
And are you advertising it from now or usually advertise it after it's done or how?
For the first duplex, we haven't had to really advertise it because we already had a pool of applicants. I think we would probably wait and see if we have buyers that are already on our application list before we advertise further just to make sure we have opportunities.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? Hearing, seeing no hands raised on the computer nor on the phones, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
Move by Salee.
Second by Thomas.
All right. I'm going to say move by Salee, seconded by Mims. Discussion?
I'm just very, very impressed with this, how comprehensive this program is. It's not just about renovating and buying a house. It's all the educational aspects of it, the neighborhood component. It's just a really impressive program.
I agree with you. This is really nice and I guess we just need to think about doing more of this. Whether it is for, like for the South District or somewhere else, but this is really nice programs and it's not like really costly and the city is also, I just love the way that we did it, like the solar panel that we have and yes, making sure that we are complying with our, you know, climate action plan and all this, which is great. It's amazing. Thank you for the staff.
Yeah, affordable housing, this is our opportunity that we're, that we have now and we did one more prior and we have two more in the future. So this is very impressive and I'm happy to be a part of, of this. All right, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yeah.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 13, utility rate, public hearing resolution. Ordinance amending Title III entitled City Finances, Taxation and Fees. Chapter four entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines and Penalties. Section three, four and five entitled Solid Waste Disposal. This is first consideration. I'm going to open the public hearing. And we're going to have a staff presentation on this.
It's not on my screen. I don't know if they need to. This is Dennis Bachamsted, the Finance Director for the city.
You should be able to, Dennis. If not, I can pull up what you sent me.
Okay, it says the host has disabled my screen sharing.
Technical difficulties here. Hopefully Lily's on the other end looking at it too.
There goes.
Okay.
Okay, looks like we're in business now. So once again, this is Dennis Bachamsted, the Finance Director for the City of Iowa City. And tonight is the first consideration for a rate ordinance for the city's landfill and refuse collection funds. In the refuse collection fund, there is a curbside recycling fee rate increase proposed. This was approved as part of the fiscal year 2021 budget and three-year financial plan. It would be a 90 cent per dwelling unit per month increase, which would bring the monthly cost or rate for the curbside recycling from $5.10 to $6 per month, and this would take effect on July 1st. This increase will generate approximately $170,000 per year, which will help to cover the cost of the program and the processing of the recycled materials. The last time there was a recycling fee increase, it was a dollar per dwelling unit per month increase in fiscal year 2018. To give you an idea on the growth of the recycling program, this chart here shows the, in the blue bars, the amount of tonnage that has been collected for the last five years. And the orange line represents the cost of running the operation. And in 2018, we began the single stream operations and you can see at that point the amount of tons being collected started growing significantly as well as the cost to handle and process those materials and we anticipate into 2020 that this will continue to grow in that upward direction. As far as the fund's financial health and financial projections, this chart represents the revenues and expenses for our refuse collection fund, the red line being expenses and the blue line being revenues. So you can see that we're projecting our expenses to exceed our revenues in the refuse fund into the near future. 2021 has a significant deficit and that's primarily due to the purchase of two automated recycle trucks of a cost of approximately $550,000. Clearly with a projection of this nature, where we're projecting expenses to exceed revenues, this is something that we'll have to continue to monitor over the next couple of years. For the landfill fund, there's a number of rate changes being proposed. For the solid waste disposal rate at the landfill, we're looking at a $2.50 per ton increase. This would bring the resident rate up to $45 per ton. A contaminated soil disposal rate increase of $35 per ton, which would bring the rate up to $50 per ton, and this is to bring it in line with other soil disposal rates at the landfill. And then for the minimum solid waste disposal rate, so if you bring your pickup truck out there and dump waste and it's below the the minimum one-ton rate, then that fee is being raised 50 cents, which would bring up to $7 per load. This is estimated to generate approximately $350,000 per year. And this will be put towards capital improvements, operations such as staff and also towards the closure reserves. Last time that the city did a tipping fee increase, it was $4 per ton in fiscal year 2016. Other rate changes for TVs and monitors that are less than 18 inches, the pickup rate is going up to $21 and the drop-off rate is going up to $15. For those that are greater than 18 inches, the fees are actually decreasing to those same rates so that the smaller and the larger TVs and monitors will, will be picked up or dropped off at the same rate. This is revenue neutral. However, it will create operating efficiencies for the staff that are picking up appliances or pick up the TVs or accepting them and just as far as monitoring that and determining what the rate should be. And this is a projection of the landfill fund balance. You can see that it has grown over the last several years. But we are projecting that to, to begin to decline. And this is primarily due to the capital investments in buildings, equipment, staff and other infrastructure maintenance out at the landfill, which are, some of those are, cost a significant amount. And so we're projecting that fund balance to start to decrease. And to summarize all of these changes in this ordinance, these were approved as part of the fiscal year 21 budget. Includes a curbside recycling fee, rate increase of 90 cents per dwelling unit per month, a landfill solid waste disposal rate increase of 250 per ton, a contaminated soil disposal rate increase of $35 per ton and a minimum solid waste disposal fee increase of 50 cents per load. And then the TV, monitor pickup and disposal rates are being equalized. And I will try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Dennis? Hearing none. I don't see anyone from the public wanting to address this topic. Again, you would have to raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So move by Mims.
Second by Thomas.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Thomas. Counsel discussion?
I would just say I want to appreciate staff's efforts on this. This is a change that we made, I don't know, six or seven years ago, maybe on council, maybe a little longer than that, to look at all of our fees on a yearly or every other year basis. When I first came on council, we had some cases where certain fees hadn't been looked at in a decade and required huge jumps to really cover the cost of those services. And that was really hard for the public to see those big changes. So we've gone over the years to, like I say, about an every other year evaluation of what those fees are. So they're much more incremental and easier for the public to handle. So I know it's time consuming for staff, but certainly appreciate that effort.
Yeah, I think it's really reasonable change and thank you for the staff for putting this together. I should have talked early about the opening of the landfill because a lot of people start talking about that. Maybe later we can talk about this too, but this is reminding me that I forget to talk about that. Thanks.
All right.
Just to confirm, this would be, these rates are effective July 1st this summer, right?
That's correct, July 1st.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 14, radon testing delay effective date. Ordinance amending Title 17 entitled Building and Housing. Chapter five entitled Housing Code to delay the requirement for radon testing and mitigation in single-family and duplex rental residence until July 1, 2020. This is first consideration. Can I get a motion to approve? A motion to give first consideration?
Move by Salee.
Second by Weiner.
Counsel discussion? I think given.
Sorry, Mayor, to clarify, I think you said out loud delaying it till July 1st, 2020, but it's 2021. Or I may have misheard you, but I just wanted to make sure that we all are on the same page with that.
Yeah, so it'll be to 2021. And thanks if I miss, said that incorrectly, sorry about that. One thing that I did want to do is see if staff had any, anything on this topic?
All right, good evening. Stan Oliverman, Senior Housing Inspector. I'm here if you have questions. We had submitted a memo with this. I think that kind of expresses what we feel about it. Now is probably not the time to having a lot of extra visits into different single-family and duplexes. We feel that this is an appropriate extension for this ordinance.
I would agree. I think there's a lot of uncertainties and actually you have to have someone come in to, to do the radon testing, probably not the best time to recommend individuals come into the home, although radon is very important. We do know that. But I, I'm in agreement with this personally. Hearing nothing else from counsel, then roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 15, 2020 gold bond bidding procedure, resolution directing the advertisement for sale of 12,145 General Obligation Bonds Series 2020 and approving electronic bidding procedures and distribution a preliminary official statement. Can I get a motion to approve resolution?
Move by Mims.
Second by Thomas.
Counsel discussion? And wondering if there's a staff that want to address this at all? I'm sure they're standing by.
This is Dennis Bachamsted, the Finance Director again. This is just the next step that the city needs to take in order to issuance, to facilitate the issuance of the 2020 General Obligation Bonds. It really approves the sale documents. It sets the time and the place, sets the advertising for the sale. The sale is going to take place on May 5th, 11 a.m. and then we'll report back that night on the sale details and how it went.
All right, thank you. Counsel discussion? Hearing a roll call, please.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 16, Harrison Street Parking Garage Master Lease partial redemption. Resolution authorized under the redemption of Harrison Street Parking Ramp Master Lease Purchase Agreement and directed notice to be given. Can I get a motion to approve resolution?
Move by Salee.
Second by Thomas.
Counsel discussion? We do want to actually hear from staff on this first.
No problem. This is Dennis Bachamsted again. This resolution will allow for the early redemption of approximately $2 million of the city's lease from Capital One Public Funding for the Harrison Street Parking Ramp. Back in 2017, we issued a lease to purchase that parking ramp for about $15.5 million. And as a provision of that lease, it allows us to call in $2 million a year, penalty free on June 1st. And we have made that election the last several years. We utilized funds that we had on hand from the sale of the Cortland property where the rise is at. And then also we have funds in place from the sale of the Augusta Place. And then we've also collected impact fees. And so we've been able to, to make that early redemption every year and it produces a pretty significant interest rate savings on that lease purchase. And so we've been able to, to bring that balance down on that lease from 15.5 million, it's down to 9.4 million now. And and this early redemption plus our required payment would bring it down to about 6.8 million. There is an extra provision that we're asking be approved this year by the council and that would grant us the permission to, to ask Capital One to call the entire lease in. Currently, we would not be allowed to, to call that lease in till 2024. However, Currently, we would not be allowed to to call that lease in until 2024. However, due to the restrictions that are in the covenants on this lease, it does restrict some of the things that we can do in the parking system, because our creditors have have put certain restrictions upon us. And so it does kind of restrict or tie our hands as to what we can do to react to the situation, the coronavirus, the parking system, and other changes or opportunities that may be taking place in the parking system. And so, so what we currently are just asking for is permission to go speak to Capital One and ask to call that lease in early if it is going to produce the benefit or or if it's unnecessary that we should do that. And so we're just looking for flexibility to respond to the virus and in the in the parking operations. And I can try to answer any questions you might have.
Where are all the reserve funds coming from?
They are coming from the parking system. So as we we have funds set aside from, as I mentioned, the sale of those properties. And we have the reserve funds, but also the the fund itself has a healthy fund balance that has grown the last several years. And so roughly, it all totaled about $13 million in in fund balance in the parking fund. And that's what we would utilize to to call that lease in and and then exit free up to remove those restrictions as far as to what then we can do with the future revenues of the reserves in the parking system.
I can add to that real quick, Mayor. The added flexibility to respond to the coronavirus situation and and provide credits or rebates is is certainly part of the motivation here. But we frankly think it's a pretty good time to to try to renegotiate as banks are faced with a multitude of of loans that could be defaulted on. Here we have the the cash on hand to actually pay off a loan early. And it may be, the bank may look favorably upon that. So that, if we are able to negotiate that with Capital One, will also save quite a bit in interest costs over the next several years. The staff report has just under $2.5 million in interest costs that could be saved by the city if we're able to do a full call. The other thing that it does is it helps from a a cash flow standpoint, we'll no longer have those lease payments. And as we are not quite sure what the long term implications of the coronavirus will be on our parking decks, frankly, we could use the cash flow relief on an annual basis to and knock that expense off our books. And that that could give us some added flexibility operationally. So it has to be a good deal for us to do this. We're really just looking for your permission to enter into those negotiations.
Any other questions or comments from counsel?
It just seems to me that any flexibility that we can gain at this point is is a real positive.
I would agree with that, Dennis. I just want to say thanks to staff because I know we've done a lot in terms of refunding our bonds and stuff, sort of get lower interest rates and to and to make the best use of our money. And just thank you, Dennis, for staying on top of these things. And Jeff, to give us the best opportunities possible.
All right. Hearing no other comments. Roll call, please.
Maams?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yeah.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 17, procurement of professional services for prairie restoration. Resolution to procure professional service for prairie restoration. Motion to approve resolution. Can I get one?
Moved by Thomas.
Second by Weiner.
All right. Do we have counsel presentation on this?
Yeah, Mayor, it's my pleasure to introduce to you a new face here for the council meeting. Tyler Baird is our Assistant Superintendent of Parks and oversees our natural areas efforts and was involved in our natural areas inventory and master plan. So I'm going to kick it over to Tyler. He's going to give you a little background on our natural areas plan and the specific item in front of you today.
Thank you, Jeff, counsel and mayor, of course. Just making sure you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So this this item on the agenda is to approve the contract with Applied Ecological Services. It's on the agenda because of the the size of the contract. It's just a little bit over $244,000 contract. And that, this is the second phase. So we did a year one establishment in 2019. And that went through the RFP process at that time. So just a little bit about prairie establishment and kind of our push for that. Prairie establishment supports the city's climate action goals. It sequesters carbon, reduces inputs associated with weekly mowing. Prairie also provides habitat, steam education potential, and more passive recreation opportunities. And just a little bit about our site selection. It's based on the 2017 Natural Areas Plan. And last year's establishment included 25 acres spread across five sites. And this contract before you includes almost 86 acres, 85.9, and that's across 18 sites. And those sites are selected for multiple reasons, take many factors into account. Just a few of the the key factors we look at when considering are what I'll I'll go through here. So suitable sites include those sites with slopes that make mowing difficult. And the those sites are also benefited by native plants that help reduce erosion and runoff. Suitable sites are also low active use areas. So we look at park use and we maintain the level and open play fields. Suitable sites also often include wet areas that are difficult to maintain, and in which native plants are are usually a better choice than turf grass. And then suitable sites are also part of a habitat matrix that covers the entire 25 square acres of the city. So we don't just look at one place. We we try to spread prairie all throughout. So each neighborhood has a role in reaching our climate action goals. And the neighborhood prairies are one part of that larger solution. And I know we've received some correspondence from the Benhill Park neighbors. So wanted to address a few of those concerns, hopefully. I don't know if we have the photo, the area as it's flagged out. I don't know if we can get that up on the screen or not. If we can't, then I can just kind of explain the area. If you're familiar with Benhill Park, as you go along Benton Street, there's there's quite a large hill you go up. And the Benhill Park is on the south side of Benton. And it's really a, here we go, we got a picture here. So the picture. Let's see.
Can you, I shared, I shared my screen, Tyler, so.
Okay. I can click around then.
I don't think you can click around.
Okay. You can pull up the first, if you will, the first picture in the email.
Yep, I think that's what I have, isn't it?
I've got your screen showing with your emails.
My beach. Well, where did my zoom go?
It was up briefly at the very beginning. There you go. Okay.
Okay.
So you can see where we've we flagged out at the site. This this vanish point is standing down towards the corner of Benton and Miller Street, the intersection there. And it's looking up at the park. So Benton Street is on your right. Miller Street is just behind in this photo. So the white flags, the little white dots around there signify the proposed boundary of this prairie. And you can see the area slopes quite a bit. It's approximately 13 feet of elevation change from the shelter to a little bit in front of where this this image begins. And that elevation is just over a span of about 100 feet. So it's a it's a fairly steep area from the shelter down to the intersection. So this fits that first criteria that I spoke of when we're we're looking at areas to to convert into prairie. And the level areas of the park, Benhill here, are up behind the shelter. You can kind of see the one of the play, the playgrounds on the left, and then another kind of treehouse play feature up towards the right. There is a little bit of level, open space up on that portion of the park. It is a small amount of of level space, but it's really the the only level areas in the park. And that's where an old foundation remains and and where the site had previously had structures. Let me see here. And then, so that fits the the second criterion of our, of our factors. And then the site also is the only prairie establishment in this neighborhood that's proposed. It's a small but key little piece in this part of the city to add to the overall matrix that I spoke or that we we look to and through throughout the city. And it it will strengthen the entire network by creating that that extra little part or little piece that that helps link it all together. And then lastly, the the Hillside Prairie will also add a buffer to the busy thoroughfare with Benton Street. So that that's also an added benefit that's outside of those other factors we look at. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to to speak to them now.
Sound like no questions for you, Tyler? All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And then I will call you as I see any hands are raised. I see none. And so counsel discussion?
This is Pauline. It seemed a bit ironic to me to be discussing the establishment of areas of prairie after our discussion two weeks ago regarding the prairie at Waterworks Park. But I have no objection to authorizing the professional services for prairie restoration. But as most of the areas seem to make sense to me. But the Benton Hill site is the one that bothered me a bit. Shows it's only two tenths of an acre, but it's a very small park. I don't know what the total acreage is. The only other comparable area of prairie installation was Happy Hollow, was also two tenths of an acre. And while that's also a smaller park, it's still larger than than the Benton Park. Nearby Willow Creek, however, is estimated at 9.1 acres. And that's that's very close to to this just up Benton Street. And that seems like more than enough for for this side of town to have. As Susan mentioned earlier, we've received a lot of correspondence from residents of this neighborhood. Benton Street, it's a major west east thoroughfare for me. I drive on that road all the time. And and just like the residents, I've I've watched as this wonderful little west side green spaces has slowly been chipped away, hardly resembling what its original charm was. So I would ask that that it would be removed from that proposal for prairie plantings, but I would be supportive of the others.
Well, I would say I'm very.
I agree with Pauline. I agree. Go ahead, Janice. Thomas, go.
I'm very enthused about the the intent of this project. You know, coming from the West Coast, one of the things I really was impressed by and drew inspiration from was the tall, the prairie plant associations of the Midwest and, as I recall, Iowa was once 99% prairie. So bringing it back to Iowa City, I think, is a really exciting thing. I would say on the question of Benton, I would really like what I might call fine tuning on that piece of the project. You know, meet with the meet with the residents, see if there might need to be some adjustment to the scope of the work there, either reductions in certain areas or perhaps expansions. I'm I'm not, it didn't appear to me that the area along the Miller side of the park was included in the scope, and perhaps it could be added there. But it I think it's really important, given the response we saw to, you know, that there be a some conversation with the neighborhood to make sure everyone's on the same page. Another thing I would encourage, and it may be part of it, but I just would want to say, there are, there have been, just in my time here, situations where the use of native vegetation has received some pushback. I think it's kind of a question of, you know, what is beautiful to me might be viewed as weeds by somebody else. So I think there's a question of intention that needs to be clear when we plant prairie. Perhaps that could be addressed by signage so that everyone understands that, no, the city is not behind on its mowing schedule, but this is intentional, and this is why we're doing it. I think goes a long way to educate those who may not understand what they're experiencing. But I think with that, and, you know, hearing Tyler's criteria that he applied, it should not, in my view, pose a problem. I think it sounded like from the correspondence we got from Benton that they're actually, their understanding of the scope of the project overlapped with areas that they find usable for other purposes. So I think, again, just fine tuning it on site, I think, should should resolve the
I guess, Council, Thomas, and Taylor, they said exactly what I was trying to say. But this is, this is really also, I think, close to, you know, like two parks close together, and it's not far away. And this, I being onto that park is really small. And I think, you know, given the fact that, as Council and Ms. Area said, you know, the the cohousing, and we have more people live there, too, where, you know, like, by the building the cohousing there, we're going to have maybe more kids, like, visiting that small park, where we need, like, more space for them. I just believe, I'm not against, you know, this, we can, we can pass this, but with the exception of taking this side out. And maybe we can come to it later. But I will be support of this if we took that portion out.
My thought when I started was to take this out, but I'm willing to to agree with what John has said, and I hate to put more work on staff. But I guess what I'd like to see is some outreach from staff to maybe some of these people who've written these letters. And as I mentioned earlier, I think a big part of this is the changes that have occurred to that park in the last, you know, couple of years with a lot of trees and that big retaining wall, et cetera, that have, as Pauline said, it really, as you drive by, that park looks so different now than it used to. And so for people who live in that neighborhood and have used it, I think, you know, they're feeling the real impact of this. So I guess what I would like to see happen is have staff reach out, talk to those people, see if we can reach some consensus. And if we can't reach consensus, I would like to see this pulled from the plan. And I don't know if that flexibility can really be in there, but that's what I would like to have.
But can we approve it without taking that piece out and say we're going to come back to it after we visit those people, you know, reach out to those people? I don't know. I think we cannot approve it that way, right?
I think we have to leave it in and leave it to staff's discretion, which I trust staff's discretion if once they meet with people and if they really can't come up with an agreeable plan, that then we don't do this piece of it.
Yeah, I would agree with Susan. I think there's an opportunity here to move forward. I think there's an opportunity here to move forward with some patch of prairie there. I think conceptually, the thought of having it there, particularly in the lawn areas, which are of low value. So I think it's worth having the conversation. We can backload it into the project so that, you know, we have time to have that meeting with the neighborhood. And then if we can't seem to reach agreement on it, then I would certainly want to pull it. I think there's a change.
It is still, you know, it's really not like trusting the staff or not, but I really would love the staff to lay in now and tell us if they can do that. Can they? Yes, we approve it now and can they reach out? And if they need to take it out, even though we approved the whole thing, they can do that.
Yeah, this is, this is, yeah, this is Julie Seidel-Johnson, Parks and Rec Director, weighing in on this. Yeah, we definitely can realize this is point two acres out of an over eighty-acre project. So it's a very small piece of land that we can either work with in that park or possibly put it in with some of the other land that's happening. So I would hate to see the whole project held up over this very tiny, tiny piece of the overall prairie establishment.
I also think it's important to include the approval of this one in the project. I would go so far as to just say that, you know, I think the individuals who reached out to us, I don't know if they had the same information that Tyler presented to us this evening. And I'm really sensitive to what we heard from some of the public comment tonight and making sure that our climate action goals are main, you know, are staying at the forefront. And I heard Tyler say that this piece was important in terms of its location to help build the network of these natural areas throughout our community. So I'm very favorable to including this amount of prairie. Hopefully, it can be located there, even in this very, very small piece. According to the city website, this whole park is three point five acres and Happy Hollow is three point three. So it's less than six percent of the park area and, you know, seeing it on the slope like that. I guess I did have one quick question for staff for clarification. What is the prairie on a slope like that in winter time? Is it still usable if it's covered in snow? Children can tromp around, that kind of thing, or is it not usable in the winter time?
I can hop in on that. Yes, it's usable. There is, I mean, the snow will weigh it down a little bit. And then if necessary, we've talked about on some of our other sites that are popular, sledding hills to possibly mow a few paths in the winter, that type of thing. But prairies are great to walk around in the winter. They have a little bit of structure left at times, so they provide a different type of use as well, where you can still get out there and tromp around in all the grass.
Thank you, because I think it's important where we can find ways of replacing turf grass with more responsible plantings. I think that is an important thing to do.
I agree with what I think is the overall consensus at this point, because it's also, there's also a big educational piece to this. There's the educational piece to have also introducing all the neighborhood kids to what is a prairie and what is this part of our natural heritage. So if, I hope we can, I truly hope we can get there with a little bit of extra education, because I think the kids will benefit in particular, as well as the grownups, but it's useful education.
One of the concerns I have is with this being eighteen different sites, you know, in this plan, and we're hearing from one, you know, one residential community about their park. It brings up the question, like, when we do start doing some of the other projects, you know, where's the public gonna land and how are they gonna, you know, give input at that time? I understand that right now the request by some counselors is that we talk about the Benson Street to the residents there for that park. But I think our community, you know, we probably need to think a little bit larger as to how can we get them engaged to understand the plans that have already been set forth. Probably have public engagement in the past. And as, what we know is that years pass, priorities in a, in a, community changes. Even the was being created in that community changes. And so I just want to put it out there, they might want to think of other opportunities before we start some of these projects to get some engagement from the public. I will support this, of course, because for some of the things I already mentioned about the prairie and the opportunities that we have there. Again, I think touching base with the Benson Street individuals that have come forth, that community, just to talk about definitely some of the things that Tyler has shared. I think you can give a different perspective from some people. Maybe there'll be some compromise there, but I'll leave that up to the staff. So just wanted to weigh in on that as well. Any other council discussion? Roll call, please.
Salee? Yes? Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yeah.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Move. Sally?
Second, Thomas.
All right. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yeah.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number eighteen, adopt Accelerating Climate Action Report. Resolution adopting the Iowa City Accelerating Climate Actions Report as a amendment by the Climate Action Commission. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, Mims.
Second, Weiner.
All right. Well, this is an exciting topic. We've waited a long time for this. Would staff like to address this at all?
What do you want to do? I'll just note, this is Ashley Monroe. I'll just note that we incorporated the changes based on recommendations from the Climate Action Commission as presented at the last work session. And the resolution will move us forward in initiating a couple more projects that haven't been started at this point in time and looking for final approval.
Great. Any questions for Ashley? Is there anyone in the public? I'll go right ahead, please.
I was just gonna say, no questions, just thanks to the Climate Action Commission and to staff for all the work on this. This gives us good path going forward, so glad to see us moving on it.
Yes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, star six, darn, star nine, sorry about that. Then there's no one. Council discussion? I think Susan said it all for me.
I'm really, really happy to see this going forward. I also, I had actually read some notes earlier that were pretty similar to some of what we heard during public comment. Because I do think that we need to take a step back. I mean, I completely own my vote from the last time. At the same time, I think we need to take a step back and say, what are our larger goals? And what world are we intending to leave for our kids and grandkids? So this is a good step forward to that. And I'm going, I will look at future issues, including anything that has to do with renewable energies with, through that lens.
All right. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to item number nineteen, council appointments. Nineteen A Public Art Advisory Committee. One vacancy to fill on expired term effective June first, twenty twenty, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So we actually have two to fill tonight or to discuss filling tonight. So we may talk about them both. Well, we'll talk about this one first before we vote, and then we'll go to the next one and then make recommendations all at one time. So with the Public Art Advisory Committee, there is no gender balance requirement. There was only one individual that submitted an application, Jan Filaison. So what are people thoughts?
I'm supportive. She was on like ten years ago, but it's been quite a while. I think she was a good member of that committee and would be happy to have her back.
I agree with Susan. I think she has the experience and the knowledge and she'd be a good fit.
I agree too. We've been giving people another chance on the bus, and I think we can do that.
And those who have a real passion for the arts, that's a very, and experience in it, that's a really important quality.
Yeah.
I agree with everything.
I agree with everything. Sounds like Jan Filaison will be the individual. I'm a little surprised we didn't have more applicants for this committee. I don't know if anyone has any insights, but I-
People in a rough spot right now, too. That might have something to do with it.
Yeah.
They're really struggling.
Yep, yep. All right. Sounds good. Item number nineteen B is Civil Service Commission. And there's one vacancy to fill on expired term upon appointment April through April fourth, twenty twenty-two. And so there are three individuals. There's no gender balance here either.
I would like Ann Rhodes for the position. I think if you've read these applications, I think Ann has a great background. She's an attorney. She's a president at the university. She's been involved in management. She's been involved in disciplinary actions. As she said in her application, she's been known far and wide across the university as being very fair when she's been involved in those kinds of issues. So she has some of that experience that we have talked about in the last couple of meetings that our other applicants have not really shown that they have. So I would highly recommend Ann for that position.
I agree with Susan. I think with most applicants for boards and commissions, we know very little about them, except maybe their age and their gender. So it is helpful when an applicant comes before us that we're familiar with. And I do know Ann Rhodes from when I worked at the hospital. And I found her to always be very knowledgeable and professional while doing her job. And so I believe she would do very well on the Civil Service Commission.
She's also the only applicant who really, who had this as her really, number one and really only choice.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm supportive of Ann Rhodes. All right. Sounds like we have some agreements here. So could I get a motion to approve, to appoint Jan Filaison to Public Art Advisory Committee and Ann Rhodes to the Civil Service Commission?
Second by Mims.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Mims. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yeah.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right, we have a long list to go through here. And maybe this talks about where we are with COVID- nineteen. Item number twenty, our announcements are previous. Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Community Police Review Board, two vacancies to fill a four-year term. Community Police Review Board, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Housing and Community Development Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Planning and Zoning Commission, two vacancies to fill a five-year term. Telecommunications Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Applications must be received by five P M Tuesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Which I think we just did. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Onto item number twenty-one, who had, who has been with us since our five P M call and work session. We'll start with Austin Wu from U S. U I S G.
Yeah, so hello there, anyone, everyone. I don't have any campus events to speak of again. University's still closed. But I would like to congratulate the team at the University of Iowa College of Public Health, led by Professor of Bioinformatics Joe Kavanaugh, in their work developing models and analyzing data with Iowa Department of Public Health to help tailor Iowa-specific responses and models for COVID- nineteen. Tonight is actually my last formal council meeting in my capacity as the U I C city liaison. Next one, Ryan will be taking my spot. So I would like to thank council and staff and allowing U I S G the privilege to occupy the space it has in city government over the past few years. I believe that cooperation between U I S G and city councils built a better mutual understanding of campus and community issues over time. And I am confident that Ryan, the incoming city liaison, will be able to build upon this relationship in the coming year. It is a little weird to hand off the reins in this setting, but everything's been weird for the past month. Thank you all.
Well, thanks for all you've done, Austin. Certainly have enjoyed you in this capacity, but of course, we had you the previous year in your second, second-in-command capacity as a liaison, so, yeah.
And it feels like the end of an era, almost.
Well, wish you the best in all your future endeavors, that's for certain.
Thank you.
Yes, and we'll be welcoming Ryan in future meetings, so absolutely. All right. Item number twenty-two, city council information. Just start if anybody has anything.
I guess when I say-
Susan, let's mute it.
Okay.
But you can go ahead, Mayor Protesely.
I just want to say, like, Friday will be, of course, I didn't go nowhere. I don't have a last thing. But I just want to say that Friday will be the first day of the month of Ramadan. And I just would like from here to just tell all the Muslim community, Happy Ramadan. And I know that it will be awkward this year, because Ramadan is about going out, pray together and eat together. And during this, like, crisis, we cannot do that. I still encourage the people to stay home, eat with your family, get to know each other better and pray together. And, you know, just please stay home, don't go outside.
Great, great.
I wanted to follow up on a comment that Laura had made earlier about the efforts of I C A D, et cetera. And I wanted to point out a specific website that I C A D, think Iowa City, which is the C V B, Iowa City Downtown District, and Iowa City Business, Iowa City Area Business Partners, which must be the change, or did I say that? Who did I miss? Have put together is I C areatogether.com. The letter I, the letter C, and then areatogether.com. And they've put this together in response to COVID- nineteen as resources for individuals and particularly businesses in the area. So if there are any business owners or others, anybody listening and watching us tonight, I would encourage you to go to it. It's got links to the U S Small Business Administration, the Coronavirus Stimulus Plan, Phase Two from the federal government, link to Iowa Workforce Development, United Way, Johnson County Public Health. So it's a great resource that our local groups have put together. So it's a great resource that our local groups have put together to help people in the community. So thank you to them, I really appreciate it.
I would just add to what Ma said, to, to all residents who are Muslim and will be, and will be observing Ramadan with bark.
I just wanted to kind of chime in and talk about the staff of the city that is a part of the E O C. Fire Chief Greer continues to lead that meeting on a daily basis, Monday through Friday, every day at nine thirty A M. And our staff, I, I just wanted, just let you know how intentional they are at ensuring different aspects of our community when it comes down to COVID nineteen. And so I think we should feel really blessed to have that being shepherded every day by key leaders within our city staff. And so I've been privileged to be a part of that. And so just wanted to give a shout out there. And again, I personally have been involved with a lot of Zoom webinars or been on a lot of panels, and I think a lot of it does kind of surround what is the city doing for, during this time period of COVID nineteen? What are some of the things that are, that's happening? Really from Johnson County Collaborative E O C Group. And so I've been real engaged with a lot of those, almost nonstop. Very few hours within a day, within the day that isn't with either for city stuff or my personal, my real, real job stuff, right? I don't know what a real job, this is all real, right? Been on council and been working every day. So just wanted to take a moment just to talk about how, how blessed I am and to be a part of that and how blessed we all should feel to be a part of a great city that really is looking at various aspects of our community. So thanks to our city staff.
I guess I would just follow up on that, encouraging anybody who might still be listening to consider serving on some of those boards and commissions that are open. And in this moment, it has been pretty clear to me as a public official that our community is approaching this pandemic with the clear direction to help the people who are most vulnerable in our community first and foremost, and to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be safe and to be healthy. And I'm just so privileged to be part of this community and to know that that's where we are coming from and that's what we are working towards. And so I, you know, just from people that I've been talking to, if you're feeling hopeless or listless or aren't really sure what we can do to impact what's happening in our lives and doing good, serving on a board and commission is a great way to get involved at a local level where you can really make a difference. So I hope some folks will sign up.
Great.
I just, I'd like to say that we have so many kind, caring members of our community. I recently participated in, in two drive-by honk and waves. And I, I've seen around the country, a lot of teachers were doing that with their school students, but these were for some celebrations for some folks. And it's just, it was a fun, safe way to be outside while, while also making people happy. Because that, we need to stay happy. We have to stay happy, have to stay safe and, and hang in there, because we will get through these trying times together. But, and if you, but I'd like to say that if you are feeling stressed by all this, you're not alone. We all are feeling a little bit of that stress and strain and uncertainty. But please reach out to friends, family members, or the many other resources that are offered in our community, because we are a community that cares.
If no one has something, I just have the last thing I want to say. Yeah, I just, I just want, I really forget to say that. Some people reach out to me and I just want to say this to the staff and also to you, that a lot of people asking for the landfill to be open, because, you know, somebody's like coming, is here now. And people like, they have a lot of things in their garage they need to clean it. People are staying home now, they just doing cleaning to their house, and they have all this item that they don't want it. Because they are, people start going outside the city limit to throw out items, and people are complaining. I receive complaint, I receive also some people rush out to the Board of Supervisor, O S A M Porter, and she also reached out to me discussing the same thing. She forwarded me like some emails that they receive. I just would like the, the city to consider opening the landfill if possible.
We can, we've had a lot of discussions on that. I think we've probably heard from the same couple of individuals that, that has contacted the Board of Supervisors and perhaps reached out to you all individually. We did make the decision to open the landfill back up for rural residents that don't, otherwise don't have waste service. At this point, we are exploring ways to offer kind of one-time yard waste or bulky waste type of drop-off for individuals. But we're, we're going to continue to prioritize the, the kind of health and safety of the staff out there. And the, the, the traditional methods just didn't, you know, everybody was a little uncomfortable with, with the interactions that, that take place out there with our traditional methods. So we're exploring some, some different options. And hopefully we'll have a, a few options to offer the community. But encourage you, if you get emails, send them our way. We're happy to, to try to interact with those people and explore solutions for them. And then just to clarify that the landfill is still open for your commercial haulers. And people can, can work with commercial haulers to, to get rid of anything that they, they absolutely have to. Otherwise, we're asking them to store a little bit longer. And the reason that we're, we're still open to commercial haulers is because they generally don't have any interaction with staff. They all have accounts. So as they hit the scale, we don't need to interact with them. We can identify the vehicle, we can weigh the vehicle, and they can proceed, and it's electronic billing as opposed to your residential customers, which is all cash and credit card-based transactions. And the commercial haulers often dump right into the landfill as opposed to your residential folks that dump into a dumpster, and then our staff gets that and puts that into a dumpster. So there's, there's differences in how waste is treated at the, at the landfill, and that's why we drew the distinction of no residential, but, but will allow the, the commercial to continue.
I guess, sound good, yeah. Thanks.
All right, do we have any updates from Jeff?
No specific, specific updates, just thanks for your continued support. And we will start working on some more regular COVID updates for you in your May work sessions. We'll try to zero in on finances and begin a framework for recovery and relief efforts, too, that, that you can begin to weigh in on.
Assistant City Manager?
Yes, I heard all kinds of wonderful ideas about supporting our community. And another way to do that, thinking long-term, is to take your census and share that information with anybody you know, to take your census. Either the paper form should be out in the mail, if you didn't do it online or by phone. If you want to do it quickly and have the means to do it online, you can go to my twenty twenty census dot gov. And that is all for me this evening. Thank you.
I guess this is great, I was community for the people staying home and doing the census, you know, this is, yeah.
I did it, it was quick and painless.
Awesome. All right, City Attorney?
From me, thank you.
All right, City Clerk?
Nothing, but nice to see everybody.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, I'll tell you that I'm pretty impressed that we made it through another one, even though we changed it up a little bit and we have people from the public also join us in a new way. So thanks to all the counselors, really appreciate all you're doing, and to staff and to our public. So thanks, and we, could I get a motion to adjourn?
No move, Mims.
Second, Sally.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? We're adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye.